Uba Sutter Lives Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Phones muted at times when you are not speaking. All items on the agenda other than correspondence and board and staff member reports are considered items for which the board may take action. The public will be given opportunity to comment on action items on the agenda when the item is heard, and comments shall be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and lead the pledge. Please stand and salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Here.
Supervisor Blazer.
Here.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Here.
Supervisor Messick.
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be action items that are routine and can be enacted in one motion. So.
I'll second.
Do we have any public comment? And no, I mean, public comment, board comment? And we have a motion. Hold on, we do have a public comment.
He has a comment on the item, not a public comment.
This would be, you have a comment on the agenda, I mean, on the consent items?
I think I'm on that consent items. So I have a comment about that.
All right.
Appropriate. All right. Thank you.
Would you like us to pull your name?
Oh, yes. Good morning, Charles Shaw, Oregon House. I have made an application to be on the Rural Conservation District Board. This five, the Five-Foot Hill Fire District compromised at least half of Uba County. Much of this area is in the high fire severity zone, with most of the parcels inside the community boundaries having a minimum parcel size of five acres is often not possible for property owners to best manage their property for fire. The RCD is particularly well-suited to work with individual property owners and with the anticipated grant funding which could be available next year. Good headway could be made to address the brush and ladder fuels that represent, that are present in the high fire zone areas. I live in the foothills, so I see these conditions every day. I've been in several fires. I think much more can be done to mitigate the fire in the foothills. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Charles.
I think you need to make sure you do that, mention those facts that you're, at the committee you're getting.
I will. I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. We have a motion from Supervisor Vasquez. Did we have a second?
We did.
From Supervisor Bradford. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Motion passes. Consent Agenda passes, and we're moving on to our presentation. Okay, we have a special presentation from David Reed, Uba Sutter Arts Council.
Good morning. Morning Chairman Blazer, members of the Board of Directors and staff, or Board of Supervisors, excuse me. I like to make an annual presentation just to bring you up to date on what we've been doing as your representative to the California Arts Council, of which we're the local affiliate and have been since 1981. Long before my time. I'll take you through some, some basics here and bring you up to date. Let's see, share screen is failed right here at the outset. There we go. All right. Thanks, Natalie. All right, Uba Sutter Arts and Culture. Here we go. Pushing the wrong arrow. I went through training before.
You might have to click back into the presentation for the arrow to work, I'm not sure.
Click on it. I know none of you ever had this. All right, there we go. Thanks again, Natalie. All right. I'm David Reed, Executive Director of the Uba Sutter Arts Council, or Uba Sutter Arts and Culture. This is our illustrious Board of Directors, and thanks to Don Blazer for serving as the Uba County Representative for, gosh, it's been several years now. This is our team of full-time employees, Abby Sessena, our Managing Director, and Shante Arroyo, who's our Arts and Education and Social Media Manager. We have a couple of part-time contractors as well, when needed. We have a number of artists in residence that we support. They provide various programs and services for us. At our main gallery in Uba City, we have anchor artists. Those are folks that are kind of in residence with us. And of course, we have our really very well-known nationally and more and more internationally, Uba Sutter Poet Laureate, young man that grew up here named Marcella Hernandez Castillo. So, got some pretty talented folks here. Our basic mission is to help change the way you think about art and culture and how it kind of fits into the fabric of our everyday lives, as well as economic development. I won't bore you by reading through all of these, but I talk about our retail versus our non-retail programs, you know, about the live concerts, the theater programs, the art gallery, exhibitions, but there's a lot of stuff we do behind the scenes. For example, right now, we're consulting with Nick Clavelle on the Friendship Park project. We worked with Dan Peterson before he retired to help provide insight into some public artwork that is part of that grant that the county received to recreate Friendship Park. So, we're continuing that work with Nick and your consultant, Hoon, to now go out to bid on various art elements for Friendship Park. We own two facilities. We're both blessed and cursed with owning two facilities, as I talked to some of our sister organizations around the, around the state. Of course, our home base is still our Borough Center for the Arts here at Marysville, and then also our Sutter Theater Center for the Arts in Uba City. We also rent a facility called Kalakara, and that's the, our art studio complex. We rent out space to various artists in the community that need a workspace, and then also use it for after-school art programs, free art programs for students. Arts and Education is probably our single biggest program. Everything from hosting student art shows in our galleries to providing field trips that we fund with grants that we receive from the state. It's called Arts Exposure. We just took a bunch of students from Linterst High School and Marysville High School to the Crocker Art Museum, and many of those students that always fascinates us said, gee, I've never been to Sacramento, let alone to an art museum. So, it's, it's pretty powerful stuff, and they come away with a real, a real learning experience as a result of that. Additional Arts and Education Programs, we've been hosting Poetry Out Loud for both counties for many years. This is an NEA-created endeavor where students get out and recite poetry from memory, for, actually, for cash prizes. Scholastic Art and Writing, we host that for both the art and writing. Now, we started strictly the writing partner, but we're the affiliate of Scholastic for seven counties. That's the only program that we go beyond our typical two-county service area. And again, we get a lot of folks that come in for the award ceremonies, and it's just another way to give students recognition for their, their artistic endeavors. We collaborate with Uba College on a variety of projects and programs. This is an example where we, we helped create the mural committee that resulted in the creation of this 2,000-square-foot mural on the side of the Uba College Theater. Other youth programs, Sketchbook Club is the name of the after-school arts program at the Kalakara Art Studio Complex. Seize the Day was the first production by our youth performing arts group called Center Stage Productions. This is Corey Kirsting and his wife, Morgan, well-known performing arts music educators in the community, and they've done a tremendous job. They did Seussical last summer, and they'll be doing Newsies and Frozen Junior this summer as their, their big productions. One of our pride, pride and joy moments this year was collaborating with the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement and finding various pots of money through fundraisers and grants that I helped them receive to begin a youth mariachi program in collaboration with Marysville Joint Unified School District. Currently, the programs this past year has been at Arboga and Uba Gardens. This year, according to Doctors Ronnie, we hope to expand to Linter, so some of those, those intermediate students, middle school students can move into the high school arena. We've got a tremendous group of trained teachers, some who had no mariachi background in the past. They've been to the Mariachi Education Conference in Las Vegas, and now they're minor experts. They're all great musicians, so they could pick up the different genre, and we had a big performance out at Arboga a few, a few weeks ago. Other programs and activities, we host a wide variety of concerts. Jim Achilles, some of you may know, he's back in town after a five-year absence. Tremendous musician, plays multiple instruments. He sings. He's part of our Uba Sutter Big Band. He's an actor. Of course, John Hadamia and his, his jazz band, we're trying to book a date with him to come back to town later this, later this year. Convergence Theater Company, that's our community theater group under the direction of Matt Demerit, well-known name in community theater here in the Uba Sutter area. They've done a number of, I would say, very thought-provoking theater, including The Laramie Project, Motherhood Out Loud, Godspell. Last summer was their big musical. We also host the Uba Sutter Big Band. Music, local musicians and music teachers came to us and said, how about a big band jazz orchestra? We said, okay, when do you start? So, we're able to host them, whether they're rehearsing here in Marysville or performing. In fact, they were up in Oroville two weeks ago. So, word is out that we've got a, a pretty, pretty fantastic big band now that we've helped create. A number of Veterans Art Programs that you all are familiar with, our Veteran Ceramics, the Bronze Face Casting, Portraits of Veterans. Supervisor Vasquez has been part of some of that. We're about to begin a new program, thanks to a grant we've received from Sutter-Uba Behavioral Health, and that's going to be a new Veteran Ceramics program. That one was very successful. We had a number of sessions. We finally found a new teacher. We lost Chris Thompson, our Veteran Ceramics teacher, but we're going to begin that again. That'll be hosted here in our Marysville facility. Some of you probably know about the new murals that were created on the side of the Sutter Theater a few weeks back as part of a mural marathon. We're actually having a big event tomorrow evening in collaboration with the Uba Sutter Chamber of Commerce, a business after-hours. We'll have live music and refreshments, so come out and it'll be kind of a christening of that wall of really world-class art, created by world-class artists. The lower mural is the one we did on the side of the building adjacent to the Buddhist Temple here in Marysville, another grant-funded project. So, utility boxes, you've seen those around town. We've lost a few. People keep running into them, unfortunately. But there's still a lot of them out there, so that seems to bring a lot of people some joy. So, various art exhibitions, whether it's our work with the American Indian Education Office, like the Birds of a Feather exhibition that we did in collaboration with Pat Bennett. Raj Cologne is a local Sikh artist who grew up and went off to Europe and now has international reputation, but she was kind enough to come here and have a special show. Lots of different cultural programs. Salt of the Earth is a new play that's been created thanks to some grant funding. We helped pull together for Dr. Mark Flax out at Uba College. This is a stage play version of a film made back in the 50s. It speaks to mine workers' rights, women's issues, really thought-provoking stuff. Last week, we hosted Larry and Joe. These are a couple of musicians that have performed at the Kennedy Center and all over the country. Chairman Blazer was there for part of that evening, and it was just incredible, entertaining. They call it Latin Grass. Larry's from Venezuela, Joe's from North Carolina, and they blend their two musical backgrounds, and it was a lot of fun. Some of you may have seen Phoenix Drum and Dance out of Sacramento. They've come up and performed a number of African and Caribbean dance and music programs for us. Art History, you certainly are aware of the Arboga Assembly Center. Our Rotary Club is helping with maintenance to that. Right now, the weeds are up a bit, but we'll get out there and get that cleaned up, just recognizing that, that part of our history. We've hosted several film festivals over the years. Local filmmakers and students can come together and, and have a vehicle to show off their cinematic skills. Various kinds of community events, fundraisers like Bandits and Bandanas, showing the Rocky Horror Picture Show, Christmas Mariachi Concerts, Harvest the Arts, we're looking for a new home. Mr. Hyer has, has other plans for his beautiful, beautiful estate out there in Live Oak, but we'll see what we can do. You certainly know about the Cotton Roster Project. Hope that gets installed sometime. Uba Sutter Arts was the lead entity for that for about two years. We raised a quarter million dollars, and I understand the statue is sitting in a warehouse out at the Flying U facility there. So, we're hoping to see that installed before rodeo this year. Various, various other grants, programs, excuse me, another cough drop. Arts Exposure on the top right, that's the one I mentioned that funds the student field trips. Jump Starts over on the left, that's where we, we get money to take artists of various kinds into, oh, well, for example, T.E. Matthews, a camp singer, you know, for students that are at-risk, system-engaged, that may not be getting any kind of arts programming. And we've done that for several years now. So, with great results, everything from poetry to ceramics to music. So, we just led a, a series of guitar classes at T.E. Matthews. So, Outdoor Equity in the Middle is, has been kind of wild. A couple of local science teachers came to us and said, hey, what do you think about applying for this grant with the California Parks and Rec Department? Well, what is it? Well, it's to get people outdoors doing some kind of activities. I said, can we add an art component? They said, sure. So, bottom line, for the last two years now, we've led monthly guided trips to Table Mountain, Sutter Buttes, where we get on a private list for those exclusive hikes. We had an event at Alice Lake, I think some of you came to. Just got back from Quarry Park Adventure Park in Rockland. You know about that? The old quarry that they've got all kinds of zip lines and, and we, and we send along, send along an artist. And so, there's an art activity. They can do nature journaling. It's, it's just been, and they sell out about, you know, as soon as we announce it, they're, they're gone. Because there's usually anywhere from 30 to 50 spaces. In the longer trips, we provide a charter bus, all the materials. We had a cross-country skiing trip up to Tahoe, Donner, I forget the name of the resort. Again, all free, so it doesn't, you know, creates opportunities for folks that might not have them otherwise. So, and we also started the California Waterfowl Duck Stamp, Junior Duck Stamp Program, something I've been wanting to do for years, where we go into the classrooms as part of this grant, and all the materials and the instruction are covered by, by this grant. So, it's been a great partnership with California Parks and Rec, and again, a little beyond what might be our normal scope, but it's been very successful. So. Something else we've done more and more lately is re-granting. We get a pot of money or have something to say about the distribution of a pot of money, like the UCC grant, where we've been able to bring money into the community to support local art projects, like the Salt of the Earth play, like Tom Galvin's history album performance about the history of Uba Sutter, number of other projects. The Mariachi program was in part funded by the UCC grant. So, we're always keeping our eyes out for those kinds of opportunities and encouraging other local arts groups to, you know, jump on these opportunities when they come along. On the left is another NEA grant that we received. You can see some of the groups that we were able to support with that funding. As always, we're, you know, looking for memberships or any other kind of support that anyone can, can provide. So, that's one way folks can help. And lastly, I just want to remind everybody that art and culture is an important part of economic development, whether it's people coming to see murals or coming in to see performances, spending money, whatever part of town these things are happening. And just as a pride of place, I think, for our community members to say, gee, look at, look at who we are and what we're doing and all these great things. So, again, I won't bore you with a whole list, but as always, thank you. Appreciate your support and happy to entertain. Any questions?
I don't really have a question, just a couple of comments. I think you said you're going to get involved with the Friendship Park?
We are involved. I helped, I helped Dan Peterson with the grant originally, and then I've met with Nick Clavelle and Hoon. I'm sorry, I forget Mr. Hoon's full name.
I think there, is there going to be a MONG display of sorts?
That's been one of the suggested themes, yes.
Okay.
Because that's, I think, a lot of the, the MONG community members manage that garden, the community garden component of Friendship Park.
Right. Yeah, that's a big garden.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
Well, I just encourage people to get out of your bubble. Get off the couch. Turn off Netflix, because live music, I'm guilty as anybody. But once you get out and enjoy some live music, it's really worthwhile. Yeah.
Thank you, Don.
Through the chair, just a comment as well. I want to thank you for the annual presentation and all the work you guys do in the community. I know you guys, as evidenced by this or your website or your Facebook, you just have a tremendous amount of things going on that community members can enjoy and participate in, and I would just encourage folks to check out all those opportunities, because I'm pretty sure there's something there for everyone. So.
Thank you. All right. Thanks so much.
Well, appreciate it. Thanks again, David. Natalie, we have Public Communications.
Any person may speak about any subject of concern provided is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communications shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, we have two requests to speak cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, who's our first one?
First is Tony Farley.
Hello, Tony.
Hello. South, sort of kind of Southwood City. Thank you, service, I'm Kevin. Thank you, service, Sacramento, New Sacramento. Thank you, service, Don Blazer, District Two, District Three. John Misk, Gary Bafford, thank you, service, Fuller. Thank you, service, A. Vasquez, the veteran, shot Resort Duffy, thank you, for service. Here, thank, W. Valentine, for service, but he's gone right now. Here, thank, Rachel, Rachel. Here, thank, again, the Co-Force Chief. Hope we get right along with the Co-Force guys. They're raw plants. Thank you, for service, Tony. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you for all your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tony.
The second person is John Sullivan.
Hello, John. Welcome back.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. How you doing? First of all, I want to honor the soldiers that died for our freedoms that we cherish so much. Addressing again, AB 1346 law, approved over and over in this room here in Uba County and California, forcing batteries and the consumers to replace fossil fuels are not the answer to zero emissions. The amount of the rare earth minerals to harvest to make them, the toxic fires they make, the weight of them to lug around in the disposal of the batteries that are produced for the masses, for everything is nothing more than hypocrisy from an ideological, ideological agenda to further enslave the California-American people. AB 1346 is an assault and a gateway law to eliminate the internal combustion engine entirely. Therefore, I strongly urge Uba County to make history and move forward to making Uba County a sanctuary county for the internal combustion engine. AB 1346 law is not only a gateway law, it is a communist intention to outright throw residents off their land. With all the further, with all the other things I have had happen in my family, myself, starting in 2017, after paying thousands of dollars in permitting fees and thousands more in property taxes to Uba County, we have had, been staring down fires all around our property and standing our ground for six seasons of fires. I know some of the fires were accidental, I get that, but I also know that the state is not supposed to burn to the ground every time the wind blows. Last spring, we had a fire, so I hopped on my motorcycle to find the origin of the fire. While I was zipping around, I ran into police and firefighters doing their job. So emboldened this arsonist was, he started two more fires in a triangle around my property. After this happened, I ran into a pack of law enforcement having a conversation. I told him, of all the years of fires, and they were politically motivated, and that residents were tired of fires because they fly a flag, and heaven forbid, like myself, flying a Trump flag. That arsonist was caught that day and apparently gave a confession. He did start the fires, but it was to steal from the evacuated residents in broad daylight, and the confession in the police car was hardly believable. Another arsonist was caught this year for starting the ranch fire. So, with all this going on, AB 1346 bans gas weed whackers, a tool we need to defend our properties from all this arson going on. And in 2028, the plan is to ban gas generators to power our wells in case of the power outage in the event of a fire. The insurance, insurance companies know this, and now they are stripping us of our homeowners' insurance, keeping us prisoners to our property every time the wind blows during fire season. So, I implore you, Uba County, do you want to own this law, AB 1346, or do you want to support a sanctuary for the internal combustion engine? Because we are not a free people on American soil. God bless, God bless America.
Thanks, John.
On that comment, can I ask County Council if we can, as a county, not be a sanctuary county? Or state's a sanctuary today. Do we, as a county, can we, we not be a sanctuary park?
I would need to research that for the board and get back to you.
Thank you. If we can, I have a list of things that we'd like to sanctuary. So, anyway, moving on. Ordinances and public hearings, Natalie?
If you challenge and court the action or decision of the Uba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use, or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the Uba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Good morning.
Morning Chair, members of the board. Jeremy Strang with Community Development today. I have the next, I have the pleasure of delivering the next three items to your board. Item 283, item 280, and item 288. And so, I think first is 283. I'm going to give, if it's okay with your board, so that I'm not repetitive, I'll give you the basics right up front, and then I'll cover each ordinance separately as they're called. So, I believe we are on 283. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the three items before you are very similar in that they introduce an ordinance that amends the subject ordinance by removing all references to an administrative law judge for appeal hearings and replaces that reference with the county hearing officer. As you probably recall, your board adopted ordinance 1621 last November in 2023, which created Chapter 2.41 of the Uba County Ordinance Code. That ordinance established the office of the county hearing officer, and allows each department to utilize those services either by resolution or ordinance. So, making the proposed ordinance amendments will allow staff to utilize the services of that office, thus, excuse me, thus, meaning the intended goals of that ordinance. These changes will also ensure that we have continued alignment with the county's strategic plan by offering enhanced services to the public. So, each staff report that you have today contains a matrix of the sections that are being amended. I will cover each of those, and then I'll quickly tell you about what the ordinance does and then state our recommendations. So, the first one. Item 283 is for Chapter 7.36 of the code. That chapter regulates the maintenance of properties within Uba County and provides a comprehensive method for the identification and abatement of public nuisances. The ordinance defines what a nuisance is and where conditions are found on properties to exist that meet that definition, and enforcement official may allege the property to be a public nuisance and abate that nuisance. So, the, the matrix in this particular staff report covers about 45 sections of that reference. 45 sections of that reference of administrative law judge that we're, I'm asking that we change to the county hearing officer. Also, for this particular ordinance, I'm proposing that we modify the appeal period section from 15 days down to 10. Over the last few years, I've been talking with County Council's office. This was a recommendation, there would just wasn't a good time to bring it forward. This would be that time. So that is also a proposal today, again, bringing the appeal period from 15 days to 10. And that will create some consistency with other ordinance sections. So there's about seven sections for that particular ordinance. So the recommendation today is, I request that your board waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 7.36, Property Maintenance Ordinance of the Yuba County Ordinance Code. Any questions that you may have, I'm available.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. Board comments?
Through the chair. I appreciate you wanting to streamline things, but 15 day at today's snail mail paces, sometimes stuff gets lost, as you well know. And with absentee owners, it's, it's cutting down the time they have to respond, and we know they may be on a vacation in Tijuana or something, but they don't get to us. But I, I, I would like to leave that at 15 days for both item 283 and 280, because I think we're, we're pushing, you know, the inflation rate, people are broke, they can't fix things as, as quickly as we'd like them to. So the old saying, beatings will continue until morale improves, doesn't really work in this case. So I'm, I'm suggesting that we stay with the 15 days.
And through the chair. So this kind of comes back, it goes, it goes way back to Chapter 7.40, which is our marijuana ordinance, which is 10 days. And that, the board at that time wanted it to be 10 days. I think our vehicle code, 735, which is item 280, the state law there is also 10 days for 10 day notice for removal of abandoned wrecked and dismantled vehicles. So again, it does the, it's whatever your board wishes to do, but it does create consistency with at least those other two documents and perhaps others that I don't have knowledge of. And that's why I say through, through Council's office, previously, the recommendation was we take it down to 10.
So thinking, cutting, cutting this down too much with inflation rate about 12%, it's, it's, you know, people can't afford to drive to work these days, much less fix some of the things that we want them to fix. You know, so it's, I would recommend that we stay with the 15 days.
Through the chair, just a clarifying question. It's, it's not giving them 15 days to fix it, it's giving them 15 days to challenge whether or not it's valid. Is that a correct understanding?
Yeah.
I mean, 10 days is the proposal.
Through the chair, absolutely. So, so keep in mind, yeah, many of these, and you have a couple of cost hearings later on, we, we work for years sometimes with property owners to get things fixed. This appeal period is, and, and Chapter 7.36 specifically, can be for two reasons. You can appeal the determination of a public nuisance or, and/or rather, you can appeal the amount of the administrative penalty being imposed. And so, yes, Supervisor Bradford, you are correct in that, yeah, we're going to work with people for quite a long time prior to issuing the order. And then once the order is issued, that starts the clock ticking for an appeal to say, hey, my property isn't a nuisance.
And, and do we have any, because I know we, in these cases, we send a certified notice, so we know when it was received, at least at the property, because it was signed for, right?
Correct.
Do we know, and I'm sure it varies a little bit, but the, the clock starts when we put it in the mail, or the clock starts when they're basically when we know, when it's been confirmed that it's received?
So, so, so there's a variety of, of ways of service. There can be personal service, which is kind of the gold standard. We do try and post the property with the order. You know, absentee landlords, as Supervisor Vasquez brings up, they, none of this, I will say, is ever, it should never be a surprise to the owner or to the violators. We, we start this conversation quite early in the process that, hey, you're going to get a notice of violation, you're probably going to get a bill, you're going to get more notices of violations, and at some point, we're going to issue an order, which will give you a final deadline to actually move and do something to remedy the situation.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I think your comment that they shouldn't be surprised is good. You know, they've got a problem, they know there's a problem, they've had complaints from neighbors or whatever. So when you show up on the scene, it's definitely not a surprise. I think we're very lenient on our whole process on how we get to the point of abatement. So I'm good with what we're doing.
Again, through the chair, I, I think 15 days, it's not an outrageous amount of time to wait. And I think in, in the current standards of our society, and what, the inflation rate, the cost of fuel, everything piling up on them, this, they need as much time as they can, because if they're going to try and do it themselves, chances are they're going to make more than one trip here. And I, I just kind of hate to box them in the corner because that 10 day expires and they have no chance to ever appeal. So.
Can you, Jerry, go us, so just run through quickly all the options that they have and how lenient we are?
So, kind of to address Supervisor Vasquez's directly, you know, even after we've issued the notice and order, there used to be a provision in 736 that said we, we would continue to operate, work with a property owner to come into compliance. Counsel at that time, I had a conversation with her, Ms. Burgess, and we decided to remove that provision because there is no reason for the, for the county to continue at that point to work with folks, especially when there's an administrative penalty that is going to begin to accrue on the date in which the order is due. So that's not to say that we won't. So there are conditions where we continue to work with people even after the order has been issued and there is no appeal. It is a bit of a chance on our part, but, but it's reflected in that administrative penalty. As your board is aware, we probably, you've seen where we've amended the, the number of days of the penalty based on the response from the property owner. So it's my position certainly that my department is very lenient and we work with people to the best of our ability and give them ample opportunity to correct these conditions well before ever getting to the point of issuing this order. You know, marijuana would probably be the only exception. No, it's not. There's probably three exceptions to the rule. Marijuana is one, because we issue an order as soon as we see it. Summary abatement is an authority that we have delegated to us in the ordinance. We rarely use it, but what summary abatement does is it allows us to move forward with clearing a condition that is immediately hazardous to the community. So there is no notice, there's nothing. We just hire a contractor, we go in and we do the work. Again, rarely used. And then the third, of course, is, is the, the, the normal process, which is, again, giving plenty of notice, we educate people about what's wrong, we give them ample opportunity to correct that if they still are unwilling or are unable for whatever reason, even if we offer them, hey, you know, let us come in and do it, and we'll keep our costs down to the minimum for you. And so, because you just don't have the ability to do this, we will work with them up to that point as best as we can without a heavy hand.
Would, would you say that maybe 90% of the complaints are corrected by the landowner?
I, I think I've said to your board previously, you probably only see about 1% or maybe a fraction of 1% of what we do. So out of the 700 complaints we may receive in a year, 700 active cases that we have, you're only going to see a handful per year.
Yeah, okay. Do we have any more board comment?
Through the chair. So tell me the downside of having the 15 day versus the 10 day. I, I, you know, again, there are no right to appeal after that. And, and 15 days is not a long period of time for someone to get the owner notified and if he's out of town. So I, and you're right, we see only 1%, but that 1% could ruin a guy's whole family.
So the downside is, is, is simply it doesn't, and if we're not going down a summary abatement path, and we've already worked with somebody as long as we think is right, or, or we have external pressures, say from my boss that say, hey, we got to move forward on this, then, you know, that extra five days could mean something. Is it, is it a break, deal breaker, certainly not?
So there's no real harm in leaving the 15 day.
It creates consistency with other ordinance provisions that we operate in.
That's our convenience, not their convenience.
Sure.
But I, I'm still pushing for leaving 15 days. It's not a big deal for us. It may be a big deal for them.
My, my concern in some cases, whether it's ordinance or whatever, that there seems to be a lot of concern for the violator, and not a lot of concern for the people that live on both sides that have to put up with the situation. So I'm all for the quality of life approach, and if, and I think we give these violators more than enough time to come around, because it's not a surprise to them.
Agreed.
So any more board comment? So any public comment? Seeing none, we can entertain a motion.
Well, we're going to close the hearing and then we'll entertain a motion. I'll, I'll move to approve as recommended by staff.
And do we have a second?
A second.
And this will mean a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
No.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next item, I believe.
Yeah, you're going to continue on to number 280?
280, yes. So I, I, item 280, the same information that I just provided, and I'm just going to jump into kind of what's being changed here. So Chapter 7.35 of the code declares the accumulation and storage of abandoned wreck, dismantled and unoperable vehicles or parts thereof to be a public nuisance. Where such vehicles are discovered to exist on properties in the unincorporated area of the county, a code enforcement officer may cause those vehicles to be abated. So in the matrix in your staff report, there are about eight sections being amended. They are all related to the reference to the administrative law judge and changing it to a hearing officer. No other items for this particular ordinance are, are being recommended today. So with that, I would recommend that your Board of Supervisors waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 7.35 regarding nuisance vehicles.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Any board comment?
Through the chair. I'd like the 15 day wait period on inoperative vehicles only in there, in that they're waiting to get parts, they can't afford to buy parts, or, you know, give them the extra five days.
So through the chair, this, this particular ordinance is, is highly governed by the California Vehicle Code. The California Vehicle Code calls out the standard letter that must be sent. It is set at 10 days by the state. We reproduce, in fact, this ordinance is for the Abandoned Vehicle Authority, which is a three-member entity, which is the County of Yuba, the City of Wheatland, and the City of Marysville for these types of vehicles. And so they all have very similar, if not exact, ordinances to ours, with maybe exception to who hears these matters. And so that, that is governed by the state through the California Vehicle Code.
Any other board comment?
Question through the chair. When's the last time you went out and there was abandoned vehicles and you hammered them in 10 days? Because in my experience working with you last year and a half, it's taken you 10 months. So it's not like you're going out and giving these people 10 days and bam, you're out of there. It's after work and work and work and notice and notice and notice. So.
As with everything we do, Supervisor Messick, we, we, we can't control the complaints or where they take us, but we are complaint responsive. And so we're not out proactively seeking these vehicles. They, these can be confused with and commingled with sometimes parking violations. And, and these are specific to being on a public property in the public right of way or on private property within public view. And so 735 really is very focused on those things as opposed to some other vehicle code section for a tow authority that, that we may use for, for instance, there's a vehicle code section 22669D that allows the removal of an inoperable vehicle from private or public property that lacks the equipment to drive or be on the road safely. It can be removed immediately. And that, that, that authority extends not only from and to peace officers, but also to code enforcement officers. So to answer your question specifically, we are complaint responsive. If we don't get a complaint, we don't go there. Indeed, we may pass a few violations on our way to the complaint, but we don't necessarily look at those.
So, well, let me follow up on that. My point is this, even when there's a complaint, you don't just go out there and say, 10 day notice, you got to get it out of here. I know one particular one, you know, it's an older gentleman that's, has trouble and maybe his kid's causing the problem or anything else. I went up to look at it as he called me, the vehicle has no wheels and tires, drug out onto the county right of way. And you guys had been working with this person for several months, several months. And, you know, this 10 day thing only comes down to after it's been pushed and pushed and pushed and people don't take care of it. And then you put that 10 day sticker on there to get them out of there. I don't think 10 days or 15 days is going to make a difference. They, they would have done it 10 months ago.
Technically, for that example you're providing, it would be nice if CHP actually removed the vehicle when they see it, but they'll tag it and say, mark for code enforcement. They can tow it immediately. They do not need to wait. They don't even need to tag it, but they do, and then they call us.
Yeah.
So I, I agree with you 100% that, yes, it does take us time and we will work with people.
Yeah. So my point is this, to Andy, if 10 days or 15 days isn't going to make a bit of a difference, those people have already been given 10 months of warnings and back and forth with, if you go through some of these files, the code enforcement people have been so easy on these people. When it comes down to the last 10 days, they're not going to go, okay, I'm going to get it. If I just had 13 days, I'd get it out of there. Because they'd already been basically warned for months and months and months. So I think keeping consistent with city, Wheatland and Marysville and state and everything else, it's not going to make a difference to these people. Give them five more days, they're still not going to haul it out of there.
So, and, and through the chair, just to, to clarify, once again, it's not about how long they have to haul it out of there, it's about how long they have to reach out to the county and say, I disagree that this is a nuisance, or I disagree with the charges that you're about to charge me, right? It's, it's not them necessarily taking care of the problem, it's just them reaching out to us and saying, I disagree that there is a problem, or I disagree with what you're trying to charge me. Is that a correct understanding?
That is correct.
So for me, it gets back to kind of what we said before, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. Having pride in your community in the county and, and seeing things abandoned on the side of the road, I've got very little patience with that. So any more board comments? Any public comment on this item? Okay, so we will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve per staff recommendation.
No, second.
We have a motion, we have a second, and we need a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board.
Okay, item 288.
All right, so the last item, 288. So the first two really affected code enforcement. This next item is for building. As you know, I also oversee the building department. And so Chapter 10.05 regulates building and construction services. Here, we're, we've only got two sections being affected by the administrative law judge reference. And, and then the, the next item would be the 15 day to 10 day section that would be affected by these amendments. And then the final section is 10.05310, which makes the chief building official an appointed position. And moving forward, that position will no longer be an appointed position, and so we're going to remove that section of this ordinance. And that, that is, in summary, what, what these are. And so my recommendation today is that we've, your board waived the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 10.05, Building and Construction Services. Thank you.
I missed something there. Explain what you mean by it's not an appointed position.
This is like more of an HR question. So the ordinance specifically states that the chief building official will be appointed by the appointing authority, which would, in this instance, would be the county administrator's office. county administrator's office. Uh, and so we're removing that and it would just instead be, all, all positions are appointed by the appointing authority. So in this instance, it would be the director of the agency.
You? No.
Uh, yeah. Yes.
Okay. Any more comment? Any, uh, public comment? No, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. Need a motion?
One moment, please.
Did I miss something?
Um, I just had a question regarding, uh, section 10.05.730 where the change from 15 to 10, should that also be, um, hearing that is set for a date not less than 15 days and not more than 60 days? Should that also have been changed to 10?
No, um, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me, I apologize. I just have the staff report. Um, which, uh, which section again, 730 or?
730.
B.
Appeal shall be writing and shall be filed with the building official within it was changed from 15 to 10.
10 days, correct.
And then the last sentence, the building official shall schedule a hearing that is set for a date not less than 15 days and not more than 60 days. So my question is, should it also have been changed to 10?
Uh, a good question, but the, they, my answer would be no. So that, uh, oftentimes when a hearing is, uh, been requested through a proper appeal, the proper appeal process, the ordinance will tell us how soon a, a hearing shall be held and how long we can wait to have a hearing. So for instance, uh, 7.40, so we'll go back to marijuana, it was in the board's interest to have hearings heard very, very quickly. So I, I believe the language in 740 is not less than five days and not more than 30 because the board understood that, that harvest could occur and the idea was is to remove the plants. And so in this instance, I think 15 days to 60 days is, is fine. Um, if, for the good of the conversation and, and my 20 some odd years here, I think there's only been one request, uh, and it was the determination of the building official at the time, based on a, a, a technical requirement. It came to this board, uh, didn't even go to the, the administrative law judge or the hearing, hearing body that, uh, that ordinance also calls out. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we had the motion and a second, right? Nope. We closed the public hearing? We did that? Okay, now do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second, and we need a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board. See you at 1:30.
Thank you. So we're down to board and staff reports. And we can start with Supervisor Vasquez.
Oh, well, this will have you pretty stoked. It's, uh, this, uh, California High Speed Rail Authority is pretty stoked right now over a high rail beauty. After nine years, they have completed 1600 feet. If you walk, it'll take you five minutes to enjoy this 11 billion with a B Marvel. And people wonder why we distrust this. And actually our expenditures to date to May are 9,400,000. So you wonder where your money's going and how we happen to be $100 billion upside down? That's the problem. On the Water Agency Meeting Act on, uh, May 21st, um, there were some things that, that really aren't brought out about the Bullers Bar Dam project, uh, was backed by PG&E who did, uh, revenue bonds. Uh, it's the largest prime privately funded project in the state and the only project that paid for itself. Took 50 years and PG&E paid all those bonds, bought all those bonds. Um, we took over after 50 years of selling, uh, PG&E selling that in 2016, we're financially stable and, uh, um, let's see, it was pointed out that the agency, uh, limits selling power retail. So for those of you who wanted a smug, and, uh, we're limited in selling to wholesale only, that we can't reduce your electric bills. Um, but we have spent $250 million in grants loans projects in the Yuba County since 2016. All right. Friday I attended the, uh, great performance in Yuba City. And it was presented by the Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health. And it is, was a 29th annual. And this performance, these performances are done by the challenged clients that, uh, behavioral health have. And it was interesting to see the change in their attitude once they turned the mic on. And it was amazing, if you ever get a chance, it'll be happening next year. And, uh, that was quite a, quite a sobering experience there. Let's see, Memorial Day, I spoke at the, uh, Marysville Cemetery. And, uh, I think that's it. I wish you all would attend a Memorial Day ceremony each year. That's a celebration for the people who made the ultimate sacrifice for your freedoms.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Fuhrer?
Gary? So back on the 16th, uh, was a SECOG Board of Directors meeting in Sacramento and, uh, Beal was on the agenda, so they gave a presentation to the board about the importance of the base to the regional economy and to our national security. Uh, folks from, staff from community development came in support of that, and so I appreciate them being there. It was, uh, it was a good meeting. Um, and hopefully we'll be doing some more tours for SECOG board members, uh, in the future, uh, at Beal's. So, uh, that's on the list. Uh, from a community event standpoint, uh, back on the 18th was the 100th Annual Wheatland, Wheatland Pet Parade. Uh, my dog and I got to walk in that. Well, it's actually my daughter's dog. Just have to clarify that, doesn't bust me. Um, but it was, it was a lot of fun. And then after that was the 150th, uh, birthday celebration of the city of Wheatland. I was able to read the proclamation that this board, uh, passed and presented to the city. Um, and we had, uh, Congressman Lawful was there and presented a proclamation as well as a representative from, um, Assemblyman Gallagher's office. And then after that was the Beal Car Show, uh, a huge event. I was blown away about how, uh, large it was. They had almost 600 cars, uh, there and, uh, several thousand people attended, so, and they had some planes as well. And then yesterday, uh, Memorial Day, uh, there were two things I participated in. First of all, the Walk to Remember in Plumas Lake. So we walked from the Walgreens, uh, three miles south and three miles, uh, back up to Walgreens, um, with the, uh, F3 Plumas Lake group. And then I went over to Wheatland for the Memorial Day service at the Wheatland Cemetery. So.
Good. Supervisor Messick, you have something?
So back on the 16th was the Be Prepared Fair in Brownsville, um, I think hosted by OES, Public Works was there, the sheriff, pretty much every county department. Uh, it was a really great event, um, that they do annually. And, um, let's see, the 21st, I went to a meet and greet for our new Beal Air Force Base Communications person. Um, Gary was there, I don't know if.
Oh, someone was there.
Ron was there, yeah. So it's great to see Beal trying to be so active in our community. Um, the 22nd, I went to the Marysville Drakes opening night. So if you guys get a chance, get out and watch a ballgame here in Marysville and support. Um, and yesterday I barbecued at the La Marica Lions Veterans Day barbecue where they feed all veterans for free and, uh, had a little over 200 turned out. It was a really good event. And I just had a, one little follow-up on all our discussions today, jogged my memory. I've been working with Jeremy for several months, cleaned up a real bad place up in my district. And, uh, they're giving the people, I guess, too much time in my opinion. And on Easter Sunday, that house exploded from a drug lab and nearly started a forest fire in the community of Oregon House. So my opinion, we need code enforcement to get rolling a little quicker.
Okay, I agree.
There you go. That's it.
Jenna, you have anything?
Nothing for me, thank you.
And Kevin?
Uh, just a quick reminder, so June 11th board meeting, that'll also be our annual, um, CAO recommended budget presentation meeting. So we're going to talk numbers. So be prepared for exhilarating.
Good news.
Yeah.
Nellie, from the, from your office.
Nothing for us, thank you.
Through the chair, Don. Okay, I forgot something. I would like to, to get a, an ordinance that we adopted back in, uh, 2020, uh, looked at to see if there might be some changes made to, uh, the cost of repairing the sidewalks. And that's, uh, I think, uh, chapter 1128, uh, ordinance for regarding the maintenance and repair of sidewalks. So I'd like to bring that before the board next meeting.
I think we can work that through the system.
If, if I could, through the chairs for clarification, is there a particular area of that ordinance that you wanted staff to bring back to address?
Um, yes, I'm sorry, I, I'll expand on that. Uh, I pulled my tree out of my yard, uh, because I didn't want the roots picking up the sidewalks. It's going to happen regardless of where you're at in Edgewater because it's, it's hardpanned down there. And I'd like to see if the state required it, will the state help us, uh, cover some of the expense? Because I had an individual tell me that if they do it, if the county does it, it's a thousand dollars to replace one of those sections of the sidewalk with rebar and all that stuff so it doesn't pick it up. So that's what.
So you're looking for some help from the state of California?
State or the county, see if we can help the homeowners because it's a big deal.
Well, yeah.
If you don't think it's a big deal, take a pair of roller skates and go, go fly by some of these, uh, these.
Yeah, the city of Marysville has ex- exact same issues as probably everywhere. Um, so we've had some repairs done in Marysville when it exceeds a certain inch or so, but it, it's all over the county and everywhere. Yeah, so we, you know, if, I don't know, I don't have a solution, but I'm sure our department does.
I- i- if I could, through the chair, maybe instead of introducing any amendment to the ordinance, we start with a, an item where we have Public Works present, um, so some back, additional background to the board on how, how sidewalk repair is treated throughout the state, throughout jurisdictions. And then that way the board can have that education and then from there decide whether or not any amendment to our ordinance is needed.
That'd be great. I'd be really supportive of that.
Yeah, it's, it's a real hazard and some people, as they get older, tend to trip. And so it's, it's a good idea. Um, I have, um, I did attend the Happy Viking, uh, welcoming the, uh, Beal Lazion, is that her right title? Um, what, what, the Rachel Downs? What, what was her first name again? Not yours, yeah, Emily. Very nice young lady, a lot of excitement and I think this is the first time, maybe she's done something like this. But she has a lot of energy, so that's really good. And, uh, I think at the, uh, JSE meeting, Joe from Grumman was there and he mentioned, um, that we need to ramp up that interaction with Beal even more, but I think we do an awful lot right now. And I always have the opinion that we're on really good standing with Beal, but the more we do, the better. Um, Beach Festival's coming up in July and I don't know if I have anything else pertinent. Anybody? So our next step is close session. So we'll take about a 10-minute social break and do close session.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com. In the heart of Yuba County's wine country lies a quiet estate surrounded by tall pines, a lake with water fowl and fish and room to get married. Share your vows with your family and friends in a special place in a memorable way.
It turned out to be everything I thought it would be.
French Town Inn, just 38 minutes from Marysville, a world away from the usual.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.